Okay, we're going to go ahead and start as people are logging on.
Councilwoman Ronald stopped on.
Hi.
All right, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sorry to be late.
Oh, that's okay. So, a lot of things going on today. Welcome to the Committee on Economic Development, Economic and Community Development Meeting. In attendance, we have myself, Vice President, Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton, Representative of the 6th District. We also have Councilmember Mark Conway, Member of the Committee and Representative of the 4th District. We also have Councilman Antonio Glover, Member of the Committee and Representative of the 13th District. We also have Odette Ramos, Councilmember of the 14th District and Member of the Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And we also have Robert Stokes, Councilmember of the 12th District and Member of the Committee. And at this point, for Members of the Committee, that's all I see, just checking to see if we have any other visiting Councilmembers. And we do have Councilman James Torrance, that is a sponsor of a bill. Welcome, Councilman Torrance. And the Members of the Office of the President, we have Nikki Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Matt Stegman.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. And Erin DeGraffan Reed.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And representing the Mayor's Office, I see Nina Themulus.
Madam Chair.
And, okay. So this afternoon, the Committee will have a hearing for, we have six bills, six zoning bills, they're all zoning bills. And this first one is Bill Number 21-0005. It's zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to a two-dwelling units in the R7, excuse me, zoning district variances, 810 Argonne Drive. This is the 4th District. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R7 zoning district on the property known as 810 Argonne Drive, Block Number 3913C, Lot 021, and granting variances from certain bulk regulations. This bill was introduced on January 11, 2021, which was our first council meeting. This bill was sponsored by Councilmember Mark Conway of the 4th District. And we'll start with comments from the sponsor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be very brief with this. This was actually a zoning bill that was initially presented at the end of the last session from my predecessor, now comptroller, Bill Henry. It was not signed by the Mayor then, on his way out. So we brought this forward again, and I would appreciate the consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. And a good point noted, I think all of these bills today were from the last term. So Agency Reports, well, the Committee will now hear from our Agency Representatives. So remember to please state your name. And we also have joining us a Member of the Committee, Councilman Ryan Dorsey of the 3rd District. Welcome, Councilman Dorsey.
I apologize for being late, thank you.
We'll start with the Planning Commission.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Committee. Eric Tissot for the Planning Commission. As a Councilman said, all of these bills for today are, in essence, repeats, they're all reintroduced bills that were unable to be completed at the end of the last council session. They're all reintroduced in the form that they ended with. I think most of them, if not all of them, made it to third reader and just lacked the prior Mayor's signature. So we are recommending approval for all of them. For Bill 15 will be approval with minor amendments, which really just restate requirements in the zoning code. So we urge the councils favorable.
So we're going, Eric, we're going to do each one separately.
Okay, very good.
All right.
So with that caption, this is a request for a conditional use conversion to two dwelling units. I believe that the facts have remained the same as were outlined in our prior staff report from October of last year. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Yes, because these are, they're all district-specific, I guess it's best for the Committee to hear each one separately. So thank you, Eric, for that report, favorable report. And could you go over the findings of the fact for this before I move to the next person?
Sure. So without belaboring the point too much, let me scroll down to that piece. We believe that the application meets all of the required findings per zoning code 5-406, which has to do with establishment and location of the property. We don't believe that this would be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, welfare of other property in the immediate area. We don't see any reasons why this would be precluded by any other law, such as in our renewal plan or zoning code. We believe that this is meeting, or at least not in contrary to the public interest. It would allow the current provision of two dwelling units on the property to continue because they were already there. This would just legitimize that second unit. And the authorization would allow it to continue in a district where it's permitted. So I believe that would be a brief caption. It's outlined more thoroughly in our staff report.
Okay. Any questions from the Committee to Planning before we move to the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals? Hearing none. I now want to hear from, I think it's Kathleen, do I see her? Byrne?
Hi, Councilwoman Middleton, Katie Byrne here on behalf of the BMZA. How are you?
Fine, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. I'm currently in an acting position here at the BMZA, so we had an opportunity, I had an opportunity to look at these just a few days ago. So what we've submitted is that we concur with the report of the Planning Commission and recommend approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the Committee to Katie? Hearing none, Department of Transportation, Liam Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Liam Davis, Baltimore City Department of Transportation. We stand by our bill report, which is no objection.
Thank you. And I also see, we now have a Member of the Committee, Councilman John Bullock, that has joined us. Hello, John.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Next, a City Solicitor.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. This is Vic Turbola from the Law Department. You have enough facts before you, from the Planning Commission's report, as well as Mr. Tissot's testimony, to pass this bill as introduced. And if you find facts that are identical or similar to those, you can go ahead and pass it lawfully.
Thank you. Department of Housing and Community Development.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Members of the Committee, Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing and Community Development. We stand by our report. We do not object to the passage of this bill.
Thank you. The Baltimore Development Corporation. Michael Fitz.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair. The BDC is in support of the passage of this bill.
Thank you.
Yes, Madam.
And we have the Fire Department. I think it's Deputy Chief Derek Ready.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Fire Department stands by its report. We have no objections.
Thank you. The Parking Authority of Baltimore City.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Arco Sen from the Parking Authority. And we do not oppose the passage of the bill.
Thank you. The Committee will now take public testimony. And please raise your hand, speak clearly, state your name for the record. Just some quick rules for public testimony. The, our Committee staff will coordinate the public testimony, so please be patient. Use the hand raise function to indicate that you wish to testify. You can raise your hand at any time, but you will not be recognized until the public testimony portion of the hearing. Each speaker must state their name prior to testifying. And we'll start with Ms. Todd Mear.
I think it makes it hard to write the test and do both of them.
Yeah, because the examples are actually testing.
Hello?
Because of shared components, so.
Hello, somebody? Hello? Somebody?
I am going to go back over your.
Corinne?
Hello? I guess they finally muted themselves. So let's start again.
Wait, so you're saying like, even if, like, these are just not the same?
Oh, my goodness.
Because of the time that it.
Madam Chair, the host of the hearing can mute them.
Thank you, Jennifer Hasit. Thank you, Councilman.
Yeah, she cannot hear. She sent a chat message stating she couldn't hear us.
So there's something going on. Jennifer is working it out. Thank you, guys, hope, be patient for a second. Ms. Todd Mear? No. She's unable to hear. You can move on. You have to move on.
The only other way is to, and I sent her a chat. Yeah, she comes in, but she's.
Madam Chair, you're muted.
Yeah, it looks like I did find it. Maybe I did something different this time.
Ms. Todd Mear?
Wait, just bear with me until I get to the part where I actually look for the label, so.
Ms. Todd Mear, can you hear us?
The label.
Ms. Todd Mear, can you hear us? Hello?
Madam Chair, perhaps the host could just kick her out of the meeting.
Yeah, I couldn't hear her. She's, she's the property owner.
We're trying to work with her.
She's the property owner.
Because she's the property owner, so please be patient.
Yeah. Maybe she'll, she keeps, she tried it and says she couldn't hear any voices on this.
Okay, no one else raised their hand. We were trying to get her, so she sent a message to move, to go ahead and move on. So at this point, the Committee has heard testimony, has heard the agencies and the sponsor of the bill. Is there a motion to approve the finding of the facts? For this bill?
So moved.
So moved, is that? Okay. Second by Conway, and, I mean, moved by Conway and second by Stokes. Chair Middleton, yes. Councilman Stokes? This is.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Councilman Bullock, yes. Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Conway?
Yeah.
Is a yes. Councilman Glover?
Yes.
Is a yes. And Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. The findings of the fact has been approved. There are no amendments to consider on this bill. And, do I have a motion to move the bill?
So moved, Councilman Conway?
Second by Councilman.
Moved, motion moved by Conway, second by Stokes. And we have a favorable bill. Sharon Middleton, Chair, yes. Robert Stokes?
Yes.
John Bullock? Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Councilman Conway?
Yeah.
Councilman Glover?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
This is all favorable and approved, and this bill will move to the next council meeting. Okay, we're moving to the second bill, Number 21-0006. It's a rezoning 407 Benihoss Road for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 407 Benihoss Road, Block 5014C, Lot 004A, from the R3 zoning district to the OR-1 zoning district. This bill was introduced on January 11, 2021, and the bill was also sponsored by Councilmember Mark Conway of the 4th District. And before we hear from the sponsor, I just want to mention from the pre, the bill we just approved, if we can get her on at the end, we'll try to do that. Council, Councilmen, comments on this bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief for once. Again, this is another bill that wasn't able to be signed by the Mayor in the last term, so we're bringing it forward again at the request of.
Thank you. The Committee will now hear from the Agent, the Agency Representatives, and we'll start with the Planning Commission. Eric Tissot?
Good afternoon again. This bill, in its prior form, was heard by the Planning Commission on August 26, and it's in identical form to what is proposed today. Despite the staff's recommendation for disapproval, the Planning Commission decided to adopt the findings that were offered by the applicant. I'm not sure if it is in the bill file for Bill 21-006, but if the Council were to look at the applicant's 10-page submittal for findings to consider under the prior bill, which would be 20-0567, he went through quite some detail that the Council could rely upon to make a mistake finding and to justify the rezoning, as the other session did.
Thank you. Any questions from the Committee on, to Mr. Tissot? Hearing none, we'll move to the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals. Kathleen Byrne?
Board of Appeals also recommends approval.
Thank you. Department of Transportation, Liam Davis.
Hello, Madam Chair, Liam Davis, Baltimore City DOT. We stand by our bill report, which is no objection.
Thank you. The City Solicitor's Office?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Hillary Ruley on behalf of the Law Department. As Mr. Tissot noted, there were no facts found by the planning staff that would support an actual mistake here. So obviously, this, this Committee, this City Council should, should make sure that it, it finds the facts necessary to support the mistake finding, and then if it does that, we would be happy to approve it for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you, Hillary. Any questions from the Committee? Moving on to the Department of Housing and Community Development, Stephanie Murdock.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, Stephanie Murdock for DHCD. We stand by our report, and we do not object to the passage of this bill.
Okay. And the Baltimore Development Corporation? Is the Baltimore Development Corporation represented?
Madam Chair, it looks like they, Christina Moore is in the chat, and she needs to be made a panelist.
It's a public testimony.
Okay. All right, there was a favorable report. We're now to move to public testimony, and we're going to start with Representative Jonathan Fishman. And we're going to try to find him on the attending list. Jonathan Fishman, could you raise your hand if you're here? Because we're not seeing you, okay? Is there anyone interested in testifying on this bill, 20-0006? Do we have anyone in the participants or attendees that wants to testify on this bill? Please raise your hand if you want, if you, if that's your wish. Because at this point, we don't see anyone. We're checking the telephone list right now.
Would you like to testify?
Okay, at this point, based on what Hillary, what the City Solicitor's Office said, we need the finding of the facts that we don't have. And that means that we're going to have to take a recess on this particular bill. We can't vote on it until we get the finding of the facts. Councilman, do you understand?
Madam Chair, I'm going to reach out to Jonathan Fishman now.
Okay, and then what we'll do, we can come back and pick up with the finding of the facts if, if he gets available. We'll move on to the next.
Madam Chair, Eric Tissot, Planning. I had made mention of Mr. Fishman's submittal in the prior bill under Bill 20-0567. I see it in the, in Legistar under the old bill number that was provided by the applicant, and so I would direct your attention to that submittal, if you have that in front of you, because that is what the Planning Commission agreed with and recommended to be used as facts.
It wasn't presented to us. Eric, it wasn't presented to the Committee, so we can't accept that. Hold on one second. Okay, Councilman Conway, so what we'll do with this bill, we'll wait to see if you can get in touch with Mr. Fishman to see if there's something he needs to share with us, because the finding of facts are important for this Committee to have. But we'll move on with the other bills, and we'll come back. And if you can't get in touch with Mr. Fishman, we'll just recess and add this to, you know, another committee hearing. But it's important that we have finding of facts as a Committee, and we don't.
Okay, we'll do, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. So we're going to now recess on that bill. And we're moving on to Bill Number 21-0010, rezoning 2087 Drew Park Drive for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 2087 Drew Park Drive, Block 339OB, Lot 036, from the I-1 zoning district to the IMU-1 zoning district. This bill was introduced on January 11, 2021. The bill was sponsored by Councilmember James Torrance. Comments from the sponsor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Members of the Committee. I urge support for this legislation. This was presented in the prior term, it was not signed by the Mayor. And Mr. Berry and others are present for any comments or questions you may have about it.
Okay, thank you. We'll go on with the Committee. We'll now hear from the Agency Representatives, the Planning Department.
Yes, Madam Chair. This recommended rezoning was considered in its prior form by the Planning Commission on August 21, where the staff recommended an alternate zoning designation for R6. We agreed that it should not be I-1, but we're recommending at the time R6. The Planning Commission, on the other hand, disagreed and was persuaded by the applicant's testimony and recommended approval as introduced, which is the IMU-1 that you see before you today.
Thank you. Any questions at this point to the Planning Department? Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals?
Board recommends approval.
Board recommends approval.
Thank you. Department of Transportation?
Hello, Madam Chair. Liam Davis, Baltimore City DOT. We stand by our bill report, which is no objection.
Thank you. Law Department?
Hello, Madam Chair. Again, Hillary Ruley on behalf of the Law Department. In this case, it's not really clear if the Planning Commission has intended to make the same recommendation they made for City Council Bill 20-0556 last term. They've removed something from the report that discussed, that concluded that there had been a mistake. And so we believe that more facts are needed to support that finding of mistake, to make sure that it's not spot zoning. So there should be something found that shows that this is, that meets the criteria. And if that's done, then obviously, we would approve the bill for form and legal
Okay, thank you. We'll move on and get more testimony for our decision. Thank you, Hillary. Department of Housing and Community... I'm sorry, was there a question from someone? Okay. Housing and Community Development?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for DHCD. We stand by our bill report. We do not object to the passage.
BDC, Baltimore Development Corporation?
Raven Thompson, BDC. We stand by our report in favor.
Thank you. We're going to start with testimony from, you said, Mr. Al Berry? Is he on? We're having problems with these attendees today. So with, I don't know if Mr. Al Berry hears me, but the device you were on is not allowing us to unmute you.
Nate Pretto. Let me call Nate Pretto.
Nate Pretto, are you available? Are you, can you get on?
I'm here, Madam Chairman.
Okay. Yes. Did you want to talk about this particular bill, the finding of the facts?
Sure, sure. So the findings of fact were certainly made and approved for form and legal sufficiency during the last term. And I would just tell Mr. Berry is able to get on here, urge the committee to adopt the same findings of fact that were associated with the previous bill, if that's possible. And I'm not sure why the planning report was changed. It's the first that I've heard of that.
So the Planning Department hasn't submitted any finding of facts to the committee.
Okay.
And that should have been in the Planning Department's committee reports.
Mm-hmm.
So on that note, I know we have Nina Thimulus on here. We're going to need help in getting these finding of facts with... Sorry, Nina, that's not your duty.
A little more to that, if that would be helpful.
So, look, the committee, our committee needs these reports to move a bill. You're just giving us certain information, and we've always had finding of the facts.
Madam Chair.
Findings are made at the hearing. We don't have letters. We don't have, we don't have any document. We need documentation. Or testimony. So I'm trying to get testimony here.
Madam Chair, I could email the committee the already previously adopted findings of fact, which are available on the council website, you know, to everyone here for adoption. I mean, I'm sure your committee staff has them available at her disposal as well. You know, we could just add those to the file.
Well, see, when we have our hearings, we want everything with us. We don't have, we don't take time. We don't go proper having a hearing.
Yes, I appreciate it. I was not aware that this planning letter differed from the last one, you know, and this, my apologies, is the first that I've heard of it, of this discrepancy.
I just want to reiterate, this is a new bill number, a new bill. This is not the same bill from the last term. We start, we have to, this is a new term. We're starting with a new bill number and a new bill. So we need, this, our committee needs all of the documentation. Councilman Dorsey, yes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On many occasions in the past, we have adopted findings of facts based on oral testimony from the property owner's representative, somebody such as Nate, based on simple oral testimony. There have been many occasions in the past where we have adopted findings of facts without anything written before the committee.
That's true, but we don't have oral testimony.
I can speak to that.
Excuse me, excuse me. Councilman Dorsey is speaking. He can be the only one speaking until I recognize another person. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, it sounds like Mr. Pretto would be willing to offer that at this time.
Well, we need an actual testimony. We just can't, you know, so, sir, do you want to go, thank you, Councilman Dorsey.
You're welcome, Madam Chair.
So if you want to go ahead and state the findings, you can't just make a statement that it was in last term. We want, the committee wants to hear testimony of the findings.
Why should we do this rezoning?
I'm prepared to do that when you're ready.
Please explain why we should do this rezoning.
Sure. Okay. The, so, the existing I-1 zoning classification is inconsistent with the property's history as a residential and commercial industrial property. The I-1 zoning ignored during Transform Baltimore, ignored the existing residential uses that were already lawfully established at this specific location, and thus failed to meet the goal to minimize non-conforming uses. Additionally, the property's relatively small lot size makes it non-viable for a modern industrial use. The nearby neighborhood, R6 Zone Properties, are typically residential row homes and do not have former commercial industrial uses like the subject property. Transform Baltimore's original IMU classification and the more recent IMU-1 classification was designed as a transition zone to accommodate this, you know, exact situation. And that is, summary specifically speaks to the mistake in the zoning.
That's what we want to hear. That's what, that's what we need to hear. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilman Dorsey?
May I make a motion to adopt this as the finding of facts?
Not at this particular time. Thank you, sir. We're still getting testimony, Councilman Dorsey. Councilman Torrance, yes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to alert you that Mr. Berry is actually on, is the calling user for more information for testimony. I just wanted to give you an, he is the 410-456 person.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer, you got that one? It won't let us unmute him because of wherever he's calling from or the device he's using, the type of device that he's using, it won't, or the browser that he's using, it won't let us unmute him. But we'll go ahead if the committee wants to accept.
Madam Chairwoman, I have Mr. Berry right here if he wants to add anything else. Al, are you available?
Yes, sorry for the confusion. I'm not sure. I'm calling in from my phone, and usually that connects into your system. So I apologize for, I'll have to look into that. Mr. Pretto summarized the extensive discussion that went on at both the Planning Commission as well as the City Council hearing that was held on this. It was our understanding that all of that was going to be included in this file for this year. I understand the chairwoman wants to have that more explicit. We have one coming up that we'll do, we'll send that in advance right now. But for the moment, it was clearly a mistake that planning found, and we believe that the council has sufficient reason to rezone it as proposed in the rezoning bill.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Berry. It's, I just want to say that it's important that we get finding of the facts. If it's not by, we didn't get any documentation. So it's important now that the, you know, the actual documentation is spelled out to the committee verbally. So, you know, we're just trying to make sure we don't have to come back and have a whole nother hearing because of something being missed.
It was a misunderstanding. That's, we can submit it to you as we, by email right now, and you had, you had the verbal testimony, which is more than sufficient for the council to adopt.
Verbal is fine. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Berry. So we have that cleared up, and now we can move to if there's any other attendees that are speaking on this bill. Which at this time, we don't have any. And now, is there a motion to approve the finding of the facts?
No move.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey. Is there a second for the finding of the facts?
Second, Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Councilman. And now Chair Middleton for finding of the facts. Yes. Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Yes.
Dorsey, yes. Councilman Bullock? Did I hear? Councilman Bullock? Bullock, yes. Councilman Conway?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Glover? Yes. Councilman Ramos. Councilwoman Ramos.
Yes, and I have a question whenever about this.
Yes.
So, being the new kid, I'm asking a basic question because I don't know. With findings of facts, normally would it be in the Planning Department's report, or it would be a separate report, almost like testimony?
Look, it would be in the Law Department, and we would, could someone from the Law Department elaborate on her question, please?
Sure. Your, the City Council sits as a quasi-judicial body when it reviews things that are property-specific, like rezonings. And so it's up to you to be the judge and determine if you've heard enough facts to meet the legal standard. Here, you're looking for mistake. So was it a mistake in 2017 when this property was comprehensively rezoned or not? And so sometimes those facts can be found in the planning report. Sometimes it's from testimony. Sometimes it's, you know, from documents. But, you know, you're part of the, you know, you're part of what's essentially the judiciary at the moment, trying to make sure you've heard enough testimony to satisfy yourself that the legal standards are met from, you know, whatever, and you can give whatever weight you feel is appropriate to the facts wherever they're presented, you know, either oral testimony or the Planning Commission report, whatever you find persuasive.
Okay, so it wouldn't be something that, you know, we get from law, we get from planning. It's just looking at what, if it was a mistake in this case, then enough evidence from, you know, various reports, plus, you know, testimony from the owners or advocates say, in zoning cases, to say, okay, then, you know, we found the fact that indeed it was a mistake, and therefore, so we're not looking for, like, we're not looking for a document. We're actually looking for, you know, within each document that's already been given to us, plus testimony, the finding of the facts.
Yes, you can find facts based on documentary evidence or oral testimony.
Okay, so, because, you know, when, when we're approving the finding of the facts, I guess I just need some clarity as to making sure that the committee has also discussed the findings of the facts and agrees, and that, I guess that's where our vote comes in. So anyway, I'll take my questions offline. I'm learning. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Hillary.
Madam Chair, this is Nikki Thompson from Council President's office. Just may I have one moment to make a clarification?
Yes, you may.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I just wanted to share that all of these bills, since they're previously introduced, what I think happened here with the findings of fact is that when they were placed on planning's consent calendar, I think maybe possibly the old findings of facts were not previously, were not attached in the sharing of when this was shared over, because we previously had this conversation with the Department of Planning. And I'll let Eric share more if he has any further clarification. But I think that may have been what happened here, since there were no new findings of fact from the prior introductions. I think it just may have been an oversight to share the prior findings of fact.
Thanks, Nikki. And the thing is that this is a, these are a new bill. These, because it's, we're starting off, it's still a new bill. And it's important that we have this carryover, and the Planning Department, as you didn't give us any of this information.
Madam Chair, we actually attached our prior staff report and the prior Planning Commission recommendation to our current memo in this case. The difficulty that we have here is that staff disagreed with the original rezoning. So the detail that is in our staff report doesn't work in this particular case. Where we recommend favorable, it's rather easy to adopt. The Planning Commission had a fairly short deliberation, which I tried to faithfully transcribe in our memo in this case. But in cases where we don't have an attorney member who is actually submitting something for you to actually adopt and consider, it's not in a written form. And we have it in video form, but there's not really convenient way to do that. So this is one of those cases where staff disagreed, so it's not in our report. So it's up to the applicant to encapsulate that in an easy-to-adopt way for you. So in other cases where we recommend favorable, you're going to see three pages of analysis in our staff report. It's just not in this case.
Okay. Thank you. So the finding of the facts for this particular bill, and I'll repeat the bill number, 21-0010, we have approved the finding of the facts because of the public testimony. There are no amendments to consider for this bill. So is there a motion to move the bill? Do we have a motion to move the bill?
So moved. Second, Conway. Moved by Ramos.
Ramos moves. Conway seconds. This bill will move favorable. Chair Middleton, yes? Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Conway?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Glover? Councilwoman Ramos? Councilman Glover, are you there? Okay, well, I have to put absent on this, so we can move on. Okay, this bill will be moved to second reader at the next council meeting. Councilman Torrance, your hand is up. Did you have something else to say on this bill?
Um, no, Madam Chair. I have to lower it.
Okay. So So the next bill that also, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, I, um...
Councilman Conway?
I dropped in your, and everyone's, uh, inboxes, the finding of facts from the previous time that this, this was put forward to the Council. Um, it can either present that now, or at the end of the meeting, if you, if you'd like. Just want to put that up as an opportunity.
So you sent it in an email?
Uh, via email, yes, to all the council members, uh, also to the Law Department.
Okay. Okay. Yes, I have it. I'll send it also right away to, um, I'm going to forward this to Jennifer.
And for the record, um, this has the wrong bill number, this, this has the bill number on it from, from last year. Uh, the correct bill number is 21-0006. Um, the, the number listed here is twen- uh, 20-0567, just for the record.
Okay. Is there any council, um, member on the committee that has not received this? Let us know now that you have received this. Okay. So what I'm going to do, Councilman, um, we're going, I'm going to reconvene after I get through the other bills. That'll make it easier, okay?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And that'll give the council mem- the, um, members of the committee a chance to read it as well. And now we're going to move on to, um, bill number 21-0011, the rezoning of 2426 Pennsylvania Avenue, for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 2426 Pennsylvania Avenue, Block 0294, Lot 014, from the OR1R-MU zoning district to the C1E zoning district. The bill was introduced on January 11th, 2021. The bill was sponsored by Councilman, um, James Torrance. And words from Councilman Torrance on this bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to reiterate, this is again another bill that was not signed until on that last term, but was approved by this, by the previous terms Council.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you for your patience as we get through this as well. Um, now we'll hear from the agencies on this bill. Planning Department?
Uh, good afternoon again. Uh, Planning is recommending favorable for this bill. Um, for some of the findings in the background in this case, uh, this is the Arch Social Club, uh, which is a historic, uh, theater that's been here since, uh, 1912. Um, with regard to conformity to the master plan of the city, we believe that, uh, it meets, uh, that test. Uh, in 2006, the Planning Commission adopted the Penn North area master plan, and this property is within that area. And the plan expressly said that the neighborhood should capitalize on the proximity to the metro station, uh, presence of undeveloped land and vacant blighted housing to build a thriving mixed-use, mixed-income neighborhood, and that a zoning study should be conducted to determine the best zoning options for Penn North to encourage a mix of uses that serve the community with retail, entertainment, and employment on Pennsylvania North avenues. Uh, so we believe that this is a step, uh, in, in the direction of supporting that, uh, Penn North area master plan goal. Uh, for the specific required findings for rezoning, uh, there's a few things that you have to look at, um, one of which is the overall plan, which I just addressed, uh, the needs of Baltimore City. Uh, we believe that rezoning this property would better correspond to the city goals of having more opportunity for residents to live, shop, and play in the same neighborhood, as well as help rejuvenate the city's commercial corridors. Uh, for the needs of the neighborhood, rezoning to C1E, which is an entertainment district, would better correspond to the historic and current use of the property, uh, be in line with the goals of the neighborhood and the Black Arts and Entertainment District goals. Uh, there's a number of other findings that the state land use, uh, article requires you to look at. Number one is population changes. Uh, there haven't been any significant population changes in the immediate area, uh, which would not in any way really affect this particular proposal. Uh, there are certainly adequate facilities in the area. Uh, there won't be any negative, uh, impacts, uh, to the transportation, uh, patterns or traffic in the area. Uh, we believe that this change would be compatible with existing and proposed development for the area. Um, while overall, um, the rezoning in the comprehensive, uh, rezoning the city to OR1 with an RMU residential mixed-use overlay made sense because of the typology and, and the, the larger pattern in this particular block, uh, under the old zoning code, the adjacent, uh, properties are B2 and B3 commercially zoned. And so we believe there was a mistake made, that really it should have been recognized as it's more commercial, uh, and less residential in its nature, and especially with its long, uh, history as a theater, uh, that an entertainment, uh, alternate zoning would have been appropriate. Uh, for that reason, the Planning Commission recommended, uh, approval, uh, and we believe that that justifies a, uh, mistake finding, and we urge your approval of the bill.
Thank you. Any questions? Um, does the committee have any questions to the Planning Department at this time? Moving on to the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals, um, Kathleen?
Um, the Board recommends approval.
Thank you. Department of Transportation?
Uh, good afternoon, good afternoon, Madam Chair. Liam Davis, Baltimore City DOT. We stand by our bill report, which is no objection.
Thank you, Liam. Law Department?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Hillary ruling on behalf of the Law Department again. Um, as long as the Council finds sufficient facts, um, to evidence a mistake, um, then the bill would be a performant legal sufficiency.
Thank you, Hillary. Uh, Department of Housing and Community Development?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Stephanie Murdock for DHCD. We stand by our bill report in support of this bill.
Thank you, Stephanie. Baltimore Development Corporation?
Agent Thompson, BDC. We stand by our report in favor.
Thank you. Now we have public testimony. Uh, please raise your hands, be clearly if there's any public testimony. And Nate, did you have anything, did you want to say? Um, we did get findings on this from, um, Eric Tiso.
Um, I have nothing further to add. Mr. Berry is here as, as well. Um, but I thi- I think, you know, if you, the, the committee has enough, we'll stand by that.
Yes, we do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the finding of the facts for this bill?
So moved.
So moved by Conway. A second?
Talking about Glover.
Thank you, um, Councilman Glover. Chair Middleton, yes. Um, Member Stokes? Yes. Member Bullock?
Yes.
Is a yes. Member Dorsey? Thank you. Member Conway?
Yes.
Thank you. Member Glover?
Yes.
Thank you. And Member Ramos?
Yes.
Thank you. The findings have been approved. Is there a motion? There is no amendments on this bill. Is there a motion to move the bill?
Move the bill.
Second.
Councilman Dorsey, and second by Councilmember Conway. Um, motion to move this favorable, and, um, will now take a vote. Chair Middleton, yes. Uh, Stokes? Count, is a yes. Member Bullock?
Yes.
Is a yes. Member Dorsey?
Yes.
Is a yes. Member Conway?
Yes.
Is a yes. Member Glover?
Yes.
Is a yes. And Member Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. And this bill will be moved to, um, second reader at the next council meeting. Bill number 21-0013, rezoning 4015 Foster Avenue, 4000 Hudson Street, and 801 South Haven Street, for the purpose of changing the zoning for the properties known as 4015 Foster Avenue, Block 6447, Lot 021, and 4000 Hudson Av- Hudson Street, Block 6457, Lot 018, from the I-1 zoning district to the IMU-2 zoning district, and changing the zoning for the property known as 801 South. The bill was introduced on January 11th, 2021. The bill was sponsored by Councilmember Z. Cohen. Comments from the sponsor at this time?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Um, and thank you to the committee. Um, reclassifying these properties from strictly industrial zoning to IMU-2, um, is the right move for this area. This is the response to changes along the Haven Street corridor. It will enable businesses along the corridor to adapt while avoiding further residential from popping up along what is a truck route. Um, it'll also allow us to maintain some of the industrial uses. Uh, this legislation has full support from the Brewers Hill Community Association. The Council passed this bill in our last term. Again, Mayor Young declined to sign it, um, and I urge a favorable report.
Thank you, Councilman. We'll now hear from, uh, our agency representatives, the Planning Department.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, good afternoon again, members of the committee. Uh, this property, or I should say, a collection of properties were brought to our attention. Um, uh, and my colleague Matt DeSantis, uh, who's in my division, is also doubles as a comprehensive planner for the southeast portion of the city, uh, met with the owner of Urban Bill, um, who is the property owner at 4015, uh, Foster Avenue. Uh, they were, uh, looking at, um, expanding some office space within their building. Uh, one of the challenges for the I-1 zoning that was applied to the property is that it only allowed an accessory amount of offices. Uh, accessory means it has to be subordinate and not the majority use. Um, and one of the things that we wanted to do through our comprehensive rezoning of the city, uh, was create more specially tailored zoning districts, and the IMU industrial mixed-use zone is an example of that. Uh, in our prior code, we didn't have the ability, uh, to have anything other than incidental office use in industrial-type buildings. So the new IMU district, uh, provides for that, and then later, uh, we split it in half, where the IMU-1 district would allow residential, but IMU-2 would not. Uh, so one of the things we've gone on record for is that we're definitely concerned, uh, about residential intrusion into an industrial corridor, especially along a major truck route. Uh, and so it seemed to us that the IMU-2 zone was a good solution. We also wanted to look at some of the surrounding, uh, buildings in the three-block, uh, corridor around here, and recommended that the property owners, uh, work together, uh, with the Councilman of the district, uh, to see if we could do more of a comprehensive rezoning, instead of just a, a specific property rezoning, just to address their particular, uh, problem. Uh, so that's how we landed on recommending the IMU-2, uh, as an alternative, uh, to the I-1 that it is today. Uh, we believe that this would support, um, a couple of the factors in the comprehensive plans, earned section, goal one, strengthening identified growth sectors, where we've been on record as supporting, uh, industrial use and maintaining the flexibility for these buildings, uh, in this area. Um, we believe, uh, that for at least 4015 Foster Avenue, all of the uses would be permitted, uh, by right, what they wanted to do under the IMU-2 designation, so it should be compatible. Uh, and they would be able to replace the warehousing, uh, use on the property with expanded office use, and it would not force all of the other commercial, uh, users on the property to relocate. Uh, for 4000 Hudson Street, uh, they had previously been approved as a contractor storage yard use, uh, and that's permitted, uh, under the proposed IMU-2, so they would still be, uh, approved use, and, uh, they would not be nonconforming in any way. Uh, for 801 South Haven, uh, it was currently approved as a parking lot, uh, which would be a conditional use, so they would be fine as well. For the, uh, comprehensive, uh, uh, sorry, for the, uh, rezoning requirements, uh, the plan, I've talked about how it meets, uh, the, uh, the goals of the comprehensive plan. Uh, for the needs of Baltimore City, we believe that, uh, we want to help retain permitted light industrial uses and supporting office uses, um, and we're concerned about, you know, putting residential on a busy truck route, uh, so I think that this balances that very well. Uh, for the needs of the neighborhood, you've heard their, uh, support from Brewers Hill, uh, so we believe it meets that requirement. Uh, there have been significant population changes in the immediate area, um, especially in the past five or so years. Uh, there's more than 70 new townhomes and additional pending construction, uh, in the area, uh, immediately surrounding. Uh, so supporting these, uh, property owners and their existing businesses and their expansion is, is definitely a viable goal. Uh, for availability of, uh, public facilities, it's what it serves, that won't be changing. Uh, we don't anticipate any negative impacts, transportation patterns, or traffic in the area. Uh, these uses are, uh, compatible, uh, because they are on a heavy truck route, uh, and we don't expect any, uh, different degree of impact, uh, to the surrounding residential areas that are immediately, uh, to the west. Um, we will be recommending approval for that reason. Uh, we believe, uh, that this meets all the requirements, uh, to support a rezoning. We recommend approval.
Thank you, Eric. Is there any questions from the committee at this time to, um, the Planning Department? Hearing none, will move to the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals?
Uh, BMCA recommends approval.
Thank you. Department of Transportation?
I'm Chair Liam Davis, Baltimore City DOT. We stand by our bill report, which is no objection.
Thank you. Uh, Law Department?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Elena DePietra for the Law Department. Um, the Law Department discussed with Planning, um, that we felt that this bill actually met the requirements for a comprehensive rezoning, um, as opposed to a piecemeal rezoning of a single property. Um, it was initiated by, by the city government, uh, it was based on considerations concerning the common needs of a substantial geographic area. It was part of careful consideration by Planning, as Eric, um, testified to, um, is designed to control and direct the use of land and buildings according to present and future conditions, and it's designed to accomplish the most appropriate uses of land, consistent with the public interest and safeguarding interests of property owners. Um, given that, um, if we, if the, um, since it meets the requirements of a comprehensive rezoning, the job of the Council is actually made easier. Um, it does not have to have findings of facts to support a comprehensive rezoning. And Eric did a fantastic job setting forth findings, um, that they are not necessarily needed in this case. But you have the best of both worlds here. You have, um, the comprehensive rezoning, um, category, which doesn't require findings, and you have sufficient findings as well. So you're, you're good to go. And the Law Department will approve the bill for form of legal sufficiency.
Thank, thank you, Elena. Um, any questions to the Law Department from the committee? Department of Housing and Community Development?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Stephanie Murdock for DHCD. We stand by our report in support of the bill.
Thank you. Uh, BDC?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Luis Cardona with BDC. We stand by our agency report in support of this bill.
Thank you. And now we'll check to see if there's any public testimony. Please raise your hands, be clearly if, um, we have any public testimony. Okay, I don't see any hands raised, but, um...
Is Jason Watts there?
I got a name, uh, Jason Watts. Are, Mr. Watts, are you? Are you there? Getting no response. Okay, we're going to move on, uh, so the committee has heard the testimony regarding this bill, is, is there a motion to approve the finding of the facts? Do I have a motion to approve the finding of the fact?
Point of order, uh, Madam Chair. Um, my understanding, I heard from the Law Department that as a comprehensive rezoning, we didn't need to adopt a finding of facts for this.
We didn't need to, but as Chair of the committee, I would like us to, uh, vote on the finding of the facts.
I'll move them then.
Thank you. I, we want to have all this, I, I... Thank you. We want to have all this. We need to have all this in record because I have been in several hearings where we either had to go back and redo a hearing all over again, or it's just been a number of things. So it's, it won't hurt to have this as a matter of record, even though it was stated that this particular bill doesn't need it. But it would be good, so thank you for your motion.
May I just ask one question then, Madam Chair?
Yes, you may.
Perhaps as a question for the Law Department. If, as part of the adoption of the finding of facts, it would include finding that a finding of facts is not necessary because this also meets the criteria for comprehensive rezoning?
I think that it would be sufficient either way.
Thank you, Elena. So Councilman Dorsey, you've moved with finding of the facts?
Second.
And a second for Conway. Chair Middleton, yes. Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Councilman Conway?
Yes.
Councilman Glover? Councilman Glover? Did I hear a yes? Councilman Glover?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
Thank you. The finding of facts have been approved. There are no amendments to consider on this bill, so is there a motion to move the bill?
So move, Councilman Conway.
Conway, second? Do I get a second?
Councilman Stokes. Councilman Stokes, second.
Thank you. Favorable report, Chair Middleton, yes. Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Councilman Conway?
Yes.
Councilman Glover?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
This bill will, has been approved and will move to second reader at the next council meeting. Bill number 21-0015, zoning conditional use parking lots, 115 and 118 Mount Clare Street, for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of parking lots on the properties known as 115 Mount Clare Street, block 251, lot 068, and 118 Mount Clare Street, block 0251, lot 072. As outlined and read on the accompanying plat and providing for a special effective date, the bill was introduced on January 11, 2021. The bill was sponsored by Councilmember Christopher Burnett. And do we have Christopher Burnett here? And I don't see Christopher Burnett here to speak on the bill. So we'll go ahead and move to the committee. We'll now hear agency representatives. Planning Department?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Well, hold back. This was not Christopher Burnett's bill. This was Councilmember Bullock. Councilmember John Bullock, this is your bill. Sorry, typographical error.
So not a problem. Again, I thank you, Madam Chair. Not a whole lot to add. You know, we've gone through this process, as we've talked about before. So the facts are in front of us. So again, it's pretty standard and straightforward. So I definitely would appreciate support of the committee moving forward. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Planning, we'll hear from the agency representatives, Planning Department.
Thank you, Madam Chair. By way of background, this conditional use approval will support a rezoning that came in at the end of 2019 for 1020 West Pratt Street, which zoned that property IMU-1. It had previously been zoned RA, but it's a big brick building that's being renovated and repurposed so that it can be retained where it is now. Of course, that reuse for the annex of commercial and light industrial uses then creates a demand for parking that decades ago did not exist. So that's the purpose of this bill for 115 and 118 Mount Clare, which are the properties just behind, to the north, 1020 West Pratt Street. You just go up the adjacent alley and you'll see those two properties, which are today unimproved. So this would put these vacant lots that have been vacant for quite some time back into a practical use. And as a parking lot that's managed by an active user, it'll be protected from further deterioration and neglect as an active building in the area. So for the required considerations that the council needs to look at as part of a conditional use, we look at 5-406B in the zoning code. We believe that the nature of the proposed site and its shape and arrangement is appropriate for reuse as a parking lot. There will be no negative impacts to the traffic patterns in the area. They are adequate for use. The nature of the surrounding area, it's residential to the north as you get off of Pratt Street, and this will not negatively impact those residents there, which goes to the proximity of dwellings. There are no churches or schools or other public structures in the immediate area. They are accessible from emergency vehicles, should that ever be necessary, being that there are surface lots, there's no impact to accessibility of light and air. There's adequate utilities, but they're not really needed by a surface parking lot. There's no impacts to historic landmarks or structures since there's unimproved properties, and it otherwise meets the requirements for blending in with the character of the neighborhood and redevelopment. For those reasons, the Planning Department recommends approval with two conditions, which really are just restatements of requirements in the zoning code that the parking lots meet the requirements of the Site Plan Review Committee, which they already have done. I chair that committee, and they've met that, as well as the Landscape Manual, which was part of that review.
Thank you. At this point, we're split a committee. There is an amendment on this, and you all receive the amendment. Next, the Board of Municipal Zoning Appeals.
BMZA supports a recommendation of the Planning Commission and recommends approval with the amendments.
Thank you. And the Department of Transportation?
I'm Chair. DOT stands by its bill report, which is no objection.
Thank you. The Law Department?
Good afternoon again. This is Vic Turbola for the City Law Department. If you've heard the Planning Commission's testimony, if you agree with the facts in that testimony, you can lawfully move the bill.
Okay. Department of Housing and Community Development?
Thank you again, Madam Chair. Stephanie Murdock with Baltimore City DHCD. We stand by our bill report. We do not object to the passage of this bill.
Thank you, Stephanie. The Baltimore Development Corporation?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Nikki Davis, Baltimore Development Corporation. We stand by our report in support of this bill.
Thank you. And the Parking Authority?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. This is Brett Thorne with the Parking Authority. We do not oppose passage of the bill.
Thank you. And then for public testimony again, please raise your hands, speak clearly, state your name for the record. And I hope I don't mispronounce this name wrong. Eliza? Eliza?
Alyssa.
Alyssa.
Domzel.
Domzel. Alyssa Domzel. And while they're unmuting her, I do want to state that there was, something came in late, a letter from the Hollins Roundhouse Association. And letter, they sent a letter in support of this rezoning, and that's J.R. Lee, President of the Hollins Roundhouse Neighborhood Association. So we do have that in our file.
This is Alyssa Domzel with Ballard's Bar on behalf of Warhorse Cities, the applicant. Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the committee for hearing this bill. I have very little to add to Mr. Tiso's very thorough summary. It was a positive planning staff recommendation and then a positive planning commission recommendation. So there is sort of a clean record for the findings of fact that were restated by Mr. Tiso. And I also just want to note that in connection with the original, the first time this bill was before the council, we did work with the community quite a bit and resulting in the letter of support that the Chair just recognized. So other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions. A representative of Warhorse Cities, the applicant, is on as well if there are any questions about the project. But other than that, I just want to say thank you very much to the committee for hearing this bill so quickly and making sure we can stay on track.
Thank you. Any questions at this point from the committee? Thank you. Hearing none. We're checking to see if there's any more folks to testify. And I don't see any. So at this point, we've heard the testimony regarding the bill. Is there a motion to approve the finding of facts? That were verbally. Was that Councilman Dorsey?
That was Bullock, Madam Chair.
Oh, okay.
I'll play whatever part is necessary.
Councilman Bullock moved, and Dorsey second. Chair, and this is for the finding of the facts. Chair Middleton, yes. Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Dorsey?
I'll explain my vote, Madam Chair. I'm so in the habit of moving things just to, for, to expedite things. Absentmindedly, I forget my principled opposition to parking lots, and I'm going to vote no. I hope that the sponsor of the bill will not hold it against me. I think he understands my position.
And that's nay for Councilman Dorsey. Councilman Conway?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Glover?
Yes.
Yes, and Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. So the findings have been approved. And so yet, we do have amendments. There are amendments to consider for this bill. So draft the amendments. We won't, okay. Let's go ahead and, is there a motion to move the amendments?
So move, Madam Chair.
So moved by Councilman?
Second by Councilman Stokes.
Second by Stokes. Chair Middleton, yes. Member Stokes?
Yes.
Yes, Member Bullock?
Yes.
Yes, Member Dorsey?
Yes.
Is a yes?
I have no problem with amendments.
Member Conway?
Yes.
Yes, Member Glover?
Yes.
Yes, and Member Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. Is there a motion to move the bill, favorable as amended? Favorable with amendments?
So move, Madam Chair.
So moved by Bullock. Second by?
Conway.
Conway. So this again is favorable with amendments. Chair Middleton, yes. Member Stokes?
Yes.
Yes. Member Bullock?
Yes.
Yes, Member Dorsey?
No.
No for Dorsey. Member Conway?
Yes.
Is a yes. Member Glover?
Yes.
Is a yes, and Member Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. So now I would like to reconvene the hearing on Bill number 21-0006 to obtain additional testimony from Councilman Mark Conway can speak now. We can, then we'll go to the findings for a vote for that bill and then close the bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as I explained earlier, I sent the proposed findings to each of the folks on the committee for your consideration. To quickly summarize it, the owner of the property is looking to demolish a building and turn it into a parking lot. And the justification there is that in the initial zoning, it didn't properly take into consideration the use of vehicles and the amount of vehicles over time. This stretch of, is right along your road where the road next to the building that would be demolished is a gray metal two-way road for which you cannot park on. And there are a number of pretty visitable locations along that area, that being, you know, Free Library, Govens Elementary School, Dewey's Park. This particular location, which is the accelerator space, which is an accelerator for food businesses. So the understanding is that in the original zoning recommendations or the original zoning of this location, it did not take into account the amount of traffic that would be used on this road. And for that reason, would hope for favorable support of this bill.
Thank you, councilmen. So the committee has heard testimony regarding this bill and from the sponsor of the bill and also the person that represents the area. Is there a motion to approve the finding of facts?
I make a motion to approve the finding of facts. This is Councilman Stokes.
Councilman Stokes moved, second?
Second, Dorsey.
Dorsey. Chair Middleton, yes. Member Stokes?
Yes.
Yes, Member Bullock?
Yes.
Yes, Member Dorsey?
Yes.
Yes, Member Conway?
Yes.
Yes, Member Glover?
Yes.
Yes, Member Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, and so the finding of facts have been approved. Thank you, councilmen, for gathering that information.
Thank you.
There's no amendment to this bill, so we'll go ahead and get a motion to move the bill.
I make a motion to move the bill.
Move by Stokes, second?
Second, Conway.
Second, Conway. Chair Middleton, yes. Member Stokes?
Yes.
Yes, Member Bullock?
Yes.
Yes, Member Dorsey?
Yes.
Yes, Member Conway?
Yes.
Yes, Member Glover?
Yes.
Yes, and Member Ramos?
Yes.
Okay, this bill will also be moved to second reader at the next council member. And this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for your patience.
Madam Chair, I have a question. I know that this hearing was tough because, you know, it was stuff happening from last time, but it would be great to have everything all set because I don't like making decisions on stuff that I haven't been able to see. And so hopefully, we can work together with committee staff and all the agencies. And I'm sure that usually that's how it's done, but hopefully we can, because, you know, be able to have all the packages together for these zoning bills, which I have one coming up, actually, so.
Okay, point well taken. And I think through this experience, this was our first, by the way, this was our first set of zoning bills through this committee. So now we all understand the importance of finding of facts and just to keep that process moving. Thank you, agencies, for everything that you have submitted and continue to submit. And we want to continue working together so we can have smoothness in our next zoning hearings. Thank you all, and this hearing is adjourned.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.